How we offer especially high school programming. That it's not just about moving lines, it's not just about the walls that the kids, the four walls that the kids sit in and the desks that they sit in, that the future of school is gonna look different. And so, it's important to me, and we talked about this on Monday, that we get a programming plan in place. And I feel like that that is what needs to drive the rezoning. I really, I really believe that. I think that we, we grappled with that last week quite a bit about programs being portable and yet, we have to consider programming when we talk about rezoning and where kids are gonna sit. So, I feel like that's a smarter way to approach it. We knew, the high schools in the bond. We passed the bond over seventy-five percent. I think this community has spoken pretty loudly about what, how they want their money spent. And I think it's important that we uphold that as trustees. And so, the high school was in the bond, the community said they wanted the high school, and I think we, we need to build the high school. And then, we, at the same time, need to get a plan in place for programming. So, that's, that's really the way I have approached this. I want to thank the administration for your efforts related to the rezoning and the programming at Marshall and Willeridge and Hightower. Regardless of how anybody feels the process went, regardless of the missteps that were admittedly there, I know you spent many, many hours on it, and I, I wanna thank you for that. We learned something new every time we go through this, and, and I look forward to progressing towards truly partnering with the community because I think we're gonna get better solutions if we partner with the community. People know their kids, and they know their community, and they have a lot invested in these schools. And they have, as a former PTO president and VIPs, I mean, I know, you invest a lot of time and effort, and I think it's really important that we not just listen, but that we partner going forward. And I also wanna thank the community members who responded to the surveys, who attended meetings, community meetings, who sent emails, who attended board meetings, this one tonight as well. I, I personally appreciate a lot of the history that has been shared with me. A lot of people sent emails that were rich with history, and, and I appreciate that. I've lived in Fort Ben for twenty-three years, not as long as Mr. Rice, but a pretty long time, and my children have attended Fort Ben ISD schools. I was an advocate, like many of you, prior to being on the board. That's how I started, was sitting in this room and advocating on behalf of my kids and other kids. And I did that when you couldn't get a meeting with the superintendent and the community engagement was zero. I mean, literally zero. So, I do believe we've come a long way. We have a superintendent who's willing to take meetings and to be responsive and accountable. We have a board that works very hard to be transparent and to show up as much as we can. It doesn't mean that we don't have more work to do and that we can't improve, we can. But I remember sitting in your seat and wanting a better education and better options for my kids, and so, I just wanna say that I'm committed to that, and I think that this board is committed to that. As a parent, my children have attended Lexington Creek Elementary, Heritage Rose Elementary, Baines Middle School, Ronald Thornton Middle School, and I currently have two at Ridge Point. So, nobody knows better than I do about the crowding at Ridge Point. But I will say, I'm one of those parents who's, my kids don't come home talking about that. They, I think they recognize that it's crowded, but it doesn't impact their education. That's my view as a parent. I know other people have other, other views. I know other people's kids have different views because all of our kids are different. I have a daughter with a disability where walking in a crowded hallway at one time would have been extremely stressful for her, and, and it would have been a problem. Now, it's not, but I absolutely think it's something that needs to be, that needs to be addressed. I don't think we should be kicking the can down the road and, and doing nothing about that. I think it's got to be addressed. The communities that I've lived in and supported as a parent are the ones that I listed, but as a board member, we don't get the luxury of doing, of supporting just our schools and our communities because we represent and are entrusted with the education of over seventy-five thousand children. So, we have to look at everybody's perspective, and it's a very difficult thing to do. But I think it's an important job, and I do think that we work really hard to try and do that. And I, I brought some things today as a demonstration because every time we have these meetings, we, we get an audience full of colored shirts, and I see the purple is here today. And we've had red and turquoise and blue and green, and everyone comes, and yellow, and everyone comes out to support their community and to support their schools, and, and I think it's great. I think it's great that you care enough to put on your shirt and show up. And, but, I brought, I can't wear all of these, but I brought them here today because this is who we care about. Hightower, and I care about Elkins, and I care about Ridge Point, and I care about Marshall, and I care about Willeridge. And I care about all the other high schools and all the schools and their feeder patterns. And I brought these today because, literally, when I sit down to make these decisions, I have to think about every single child in these feeder patterns. And the last thing I wanna do is draw a line that sends kids from where they're used to going to somewhere new because we just don't like change. We don't like to do that, and it does impact kids. And so, as I approached this decision about the rezoning, my thoughts were, how are we gonna do this better in the future? How are we gonna do this differently where we're not just constantly drawing lines? And so, I'm gonna support the recommendation tonight to wait and to partner with the Ridge Point and the Hightower and the Marshall and the Willeridge communities to come up with better solutions. And that's, that's my vision, that's my view, is that we just have to come up with better And finally, I'll say that I am gonna support the, the PTAC and the Early College High School tonight because while as adults, we don't always get it right, we don't always get the process right, and I regret that, I think that this is something that's gonna help kids. And it's not the only thing we're gonna do, and administration has committed that to us and has committed to partnering with the community about doing things in the future, and we're gonna hold you to that. But I do believe that it is important to give these three hundred kids the educational opportunities that these programs provide, and it opens doors for them post-secondary, and I think that that is critically important for students. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Tosin. We appreciate your comments. Mrs. James? He wanted to defer to you.
No, I'll go, I'll go, and then she can go. I'll go, and then I'll go after her again.
Tell her, do you have a question?
Thank you. That was incredibly well said. I don't know that I could add more, but I will say that I also see this as a framework, as Dr. Dupree stated. I think it's just delayed, and I think that delay is twofold. One, we've been talking about the programming for several years now, and I'm not putting blame on anybody. There's, there's a lot going on in the district, and, but that needs to be a priority. And the other delay is that now we, we believe that we can accelerate the high school, which is a great thing. I also have received the same emails you have, and I have read literally hundreds of them and responded to many. And several of those emails that I've read had some really great constructive suggestions, and many of those I passed along with my own to you, particularly ones that concern school choice that Dr. Rodriguez spoke about. I think that could be a, a good solution. And, and at this point, that's all I have to say, but I'm, I'm with Ms. Tosin, I am, I am supporting, supportive of both of these recommendations this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Mrs. James?
Thank you, Mr. Rodine. So, there's a couple of things I'm struggling with. One is, and I think we struggled with this last week as well, mixing, mixing the issues. There's a, there's an attendance boundary, kids in seats kind of mentality around this, and then there's a programming. And we struggled with that last week, and I thought I had a grasp on it, but now I feel like it's all thrown to the wind, and I'm not sure I do. But if I can summarize what I think I'm hearing, I think I'm hearing the board's desire for a holistic view of district programming and innovative programming, and, and the way I put it last week, I think, was modernizing our educational experience to be a little bit more about innovative learning opportunities than about kids in seats in buildings. So, I think that's what I heard Mrs. Tosin saying, and I think that's what I'm hearing, I heard Ms. Heliger say, and I, I'm wholeheartedly in favor of that, and I absolutely, I've been a proponent of that for a long, long time. I guess in my mind, the balance between Ridge Point and Hightower was gonna be an opportunity to buy us time because one of the concerns that I have about developing the innovative programming is the manpower and the hours that it'll take to do that, and, and how we, how we can go about that and how we can reprioritize our work, I guess, to get that done. And so, I, I, I haven't heard from administration, but perhaps in the future, we can hear from administration about what that might look like because I'm concerned that, you know, last spring, we asked for looking at flexible, flexible scheduling. We asked for innovative programming suggestions over the summer, and we had trouble getting those out there, and, and some of it was, well, it's a very short timeframe. Well, I'm kind of looking at the same situation. We have a very short timeframe. We have one semester essentially, just a few months before we're, and during that time, we're gonna be making budgeting decisions and staffing decisions and all the pieces in place that would lead to that, whatever that programming is for the fall. So, I guess I understand where this is coming from, but I'm concerned that, that we have unintended consequences and that other things will fall to the wayside. I know Dave and I, working on the policy committee, have, have been putting off policies and putting off policies and putting off policies that need to get done. And, you know, I don't, you know, I just don't know. I mean, I, I, I'm struggling with how this is the right, I'm just struggling with it. I'm struggling with how to understand how it's actually gonna happen, and, and so, I guess I would ask Dr. Dupree if you can update us or provide us additional information about a executable, executable plan, a timeline, some milestones we can expect, something that we can look towards, because I would, I would really like to see that.
Yes, we would, we, that's, we figure, that we see that as our next step forward is building out those timelines to share with the board and publicly.
Okay, well, that would be great. And I also wanna point out that we have, you know, the accelerated schedule that Mr. Perez talked about tonight is three years of Ridge Point in whatever overcapacity situation or whatever cap enrollment or whatever other program that gets implemented. You know, I don't know how many kids are in CTE. You talked about the, the opening of the CTE center being an impact. I don't know how many kids are enrolled in CTE at Ridge Point and, and what type of an impact that would have, have. I don't know what, what the course selection schedule is and if we've gone, if that's happening right now or if that's already happened, and how that would impact the beginning of the school year. But I recognize that an overcrowded high school limits opportunities for students that are in that school, and it, there's only so many spots in the student council, there's only so many spots in the clubs, there's only so many spots on the sports teams, there's only, the band hall's only so big, and it makes a difference to those kids. And I'm concerned that when our energy then gets poured into a, to Ridge Point to manage all the individual situations that are gonna come up because of the overcrowding, it takes away from the energy we can put into working with the community, and to use my colleagues' terms, partnering with the community to develop innovative programming at places like Marshall High School and Willeridge and the Hightower program that's being proposed. So, I want those, that programming just the same way, but I'm struggling to see how this, this is gonna, how we're gonna get there. So, I'm, I will look forward to more information, Dr. Dupree.
Thank you, Mrs. James. Ms. Heliger?
Just one last comment. The only thing I would comment on is around the timeline. One of the things that I've struggled with personally is that we seem to put ourselves in timelines that we really can't either meet or we end up reverse engineering something versus just engineering it the right way the first time. So, I would just challenge, challenge us to make sure that whatever timelines that we put together, plan we put together, it is extremely attainable, and, and we're gonna actually get some, a good product that's meeting all the requirements and, and needs that we're asking for. I guess that's my project manager, Emmy. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Heliger. First off, I would like to start by thanking our community for all the time that they've spent during this process. I would like to also thank our staff for all of your time, Dr. Dupree and the fellow board members. We've all spent a lot of time, and I appreciate that. Last week, I also wanted to make a comment about administration owning the mistakes that we've made through the process. That means a whole lot to me, and I, and I know it means a lot to our board. That was really big. I do recognize we are not perfect, although I'm proud of our district. We do have lots of work to do, and I, and I know that we're all committed to doing the work that we need to do to get us to where we need to be. There were lots of great things that hap, lots of great things said this evening in all the conversations that we've, we've had here. I'm gonna touch on two things. One is the community partnership piece. It's extremely important to me, and I believe it's important for the entire board, and it's something that we can't miss that we have to get it right, and I think that'll be the difference going forward is, is doing community partnership, as Ms. Heliger stated and several others stated as well. It's also important that we get programming right, as Mrs. Tosin stated. Once again, that we have to get our programming right. It is crucial for several schools in our district and for all of our students. Lastly, I wanted to thank Mr. Rice for his engagement in this process and working with administration and asking some tough questions that helped develop a plan to help move up the schedule for the new high school. His vision helped us see a path forward and helped relieve some overcrowding at Ridge Point, and it significantly simplifies our rezoning plan, so I just wanted to thank you for that, sir. Mr. Rosenthal?
Yes, I have a prepared statement that I will be reading in a second, but I would also like to acknowledge Ms. James, Mr. Rice, Ms. Heliger for some excellent commentary, and I do understand your frustration. I mean, we've been through that on policy committee, and you make some excellent points, and, and again, it's not, none of this stuff is easy, and we just have to hope that, you know, we get this right. And I, I like your project management comment as well because it's perfectly fitting here. And so, I have a prepared statement now that we're, I believe we're, are we finished discussing with everybody? So, I have a prepared statement that I wrote in regards to the meeting that was held last I have served as a volunteer on this board for the better part of seven years. Participating on this board has exposed me to many opinions and thoughts, some of which has caused me to change some of my own beliefs concerning public education. On many occasions, I have stated that I will never be afraid to admit that I made a mistake or perhaps that I should have voted differently. I have listened with an open mind and have never had an issue with people who disagree with my thoughts, ideas, or votes. We make decisions that not everyone will agree with, and I completely understand that at times, people will be upset with those decisions. Again, the Fort Ben ISD trustee position is a volunteer job. Many of us, however, work in the community to support our families. My business as a recruiter, a new real estate agent, and as a teacher in a nearby district is often based on reputation. Again, I do not mind criticism for actual comments, ideas, or votes. However, when someone tries to disparage me with statements that I did not make, I am forced to defend myself. On Monday, January fourteenth, twenty nineteen, the Fort Ben ISD trustees held a workshop regarding proposed attendance zone boundaries changes with school district administrators. One discussion concerned possible implementation of early college high school programs at Hightower, Willeridge, and Marshall High Schools as a way to address lower enrollment at those schools. It was an honest, productive discussion with trustees clarifying the program administration instructions, instruction admissions process, and the benefits to students. We also discussed communication between administration and the community concerning these programs. The administration explained why steering committees were created for some schools and not others. Many of the trustees commented on this process, including myself. The point of my commentary was that at that board administrative level, on that day, at that time, the discussion needed to be focused on what's best for kids. I expressed the point of view of a friend and education colleague, Dr. Helen Graham, who I personally met with a week prior to the meeting to get her opinion of the early college high school model. Regrettably, for reasons known only to herself, Houston Chronicle reporter Kristi Nix did not report what I actually said, instead opting to attribute statements to me that never came out of my mouth. In the most egregious of those falsehoods and misstatements, Nix wrote, and I quote, dot, 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 Rosenthal said, adding that Marshall parents should be grateful for the early college high school program selected by administrators. I did not say that, imply this, and have never thought this. Ms. Nix simply made this up. For those who would like to see for yourself, please watch part three of last week's meeting video beginning at twenty-four oh nine, which can be found at the district's website. In the same story, she attributes other statements to me, placing quotation marks around the statements, but they were made up again. For example, Ms. Nix reported that trustee Dave Rosenthal said, "He didn't get why parents and advocates for Marshall complained." Again, I never said this either, especially the phrase "didn't get," which Ms. Nix put in quotes. How does a reporter make up statements that were never, never made and then emphasize them with quotation marks? And it continued, but I will leave it with that. I reached out to Ms. Nix Monday morning, asking her to publish a correction in the Chronicle and on social media where members of the public used her made-up statements against me. Rather than admitting her mistakes, she just wanted to argue about the early college high school program and input from the community. On Monday morning, Ms. Nix completely rewrote the story and corrected her misquotes. But she has refused to publicly acknowledge her false statements and has refused to publish an apology or notify me that she would come to this meeting and set the record straight. Of course, must, much damage has already been done. Considering Ms. Nix's action, I would urge my fellow trustees and administrators not to speak with her unless you were recording your conversation. It is apparent that ethics, truth, and accuracy are not valued by Ms. Nix, and it would be in everyone's best interest to respectfully decline speaking with this reporter. Congratulations, Ms. Nix. You are the local poster child for fake news. Well done.
Please hold your applause. Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. No, 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 ma'am. Please, please take your seat. Ma'am, thank you very much. Next are our audience items. You will have three minutes to speak. Mr. Rosenthal here will be keeping time and will give you a thirty-second warning. Up first is Lacey McLanahan.
The Texas Education Code calls for schools to be safe, disciplined environment that's conducive to learning, yet the current student population of Fort Settlement Middle School is overtaxing infrastructure and teachers and putting unnecessary stress on children and parents. If any trustee doubts this, I urge you to spend a day at our campus. Fort Settlement's current capacity numbers do not take into account the infrastructure limitations of cafeteria, library, athletics, fine arts, and support staff. Clearly, the school doesn't have a functional capacity of fourteen-hundred, much less sixteen-hundred-and-forty-one. I'm here tonight because I have a twelve-year-old in sixth grade at Fort Settlement, and the decision of whether or not to rebalance immediately will directly affect his learning experience. I think it's inarguable that a school filled with strangers is an environment that children are biologically unsuited for and from which many will retreat emotionally. Oversized schools lead to alienation, depression, conflict, and increased violence. We live in an age in which suburban school shootings have become commonplace, yet we continue to make schools bigger and turn a blind eye to the danger. Allowing a middle school to operate over capacity is a tragedy waiting to happen. There is nothing more important than protecting the mental health and emotional well-being of children. In February, when the board revisits the question of rebalancing enrollment between two excellent schools, Fort Settlement Middle School and First Colony Middle School, please keep in mind that a sixth grader at Fort Settlement recently committed suicide. That should be a wake-up call for everyone. We have a wonderful principal and dedicated teachers, but with more than fourteen-hundred kids, Fort Settlement is well beyond a number that ensures a healthy school climate. I can give you a few examples. This year, my son was very excited to choose theater as his sixth-grade elective, but he was denied the opportunity because more than two hundred kids wanted to take it and only ninety spots were available. We were told that he could try again next year, but if nothing changes, he might ever, might not ever get theater in middle school. There is so much congestion in the hallways between classes that my son has anxiety about being pushed down and trampled. I can easily imagine the chaos in a real-life emergency with frightened children. Backpacks and string bags are prohibited, and getting into a bottom locker is a logistical nightmare, so being tardy is a constant worry. My twelve-year-old often feels lonely in the morning before school because the common area is so packed, he can't find his friends. At lunch, it's hard to find a place to sit, and the line takes so long that kids are often just getting their food right before it's time to go. Overcrowding often makes it impossible to keep sixth graders apart from seventh and eighth graders. Boys PE is a mix of kids with a, with, from all grades, from whom, with, with, some of have already gone through puberty. I would argue that we need to stay focused on the basics. Kids will always be best served by a safe, sound, happy learning environment. This happens when kids can attend schools close to home with friends who live nearby, when schools are smaller and have the resources, infrastructure, and energized teachers to meet the needs of students, and when kids aren't housed in portable trailers like sitting ducks. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Please hold your applause. Thank you. Next up is Carrie Bronson. Thank you, ma'am. You'll have three minutes, and Ms. Rosenthal will let you know when you have thirty seconds left.
Okay, this young lady is going to be talking for me today.
Remember last week, Tammy Moreno made sure y'all knew that the Marshall community was watching? The Quail Valley Middle School community is watching too. The administration tried to take advantage of our community while we were sleeping. We're awake now, we're watching, and you won't catch us sleeping again. On behalf of our community, thank you. Thank you for listening to our feedback, our opinions, and our concerns. We appreciate that this is a tough job. You're unpaid, and you're underappreciated. Thank you for caring about all kids. Thank you for understanding that butts in seats is not as important as quality education, extracurricular activities, scholarship opportunities, and diversity. Thank you for acknowledging that the Marshall community has been left out of planning for their community. Thank you for understanding that more needs to be done. Thank you for researching. Thank you for researching innovative ideas and looking for programs that will work. Thank you for engaging the Marshall community to assist with picking programs right for their community. Finally, thank you for waking me up.
Thank you, ma'am. Up next is Stephanie Brown.
Just listening to all of this kind of changed what I was going to talk about. I wanted to talk about zoning, because I think I've mentioned to you guys about the areas that should be zoned to Marshall that won't just fill the seats and put butts in them, but they actually should be there. So I'd like you guys to visit that. I've said it before, I've said it, I was a part of the focus group for zoning, and since you didn't put anybody over there, I think that's a start, before you start talking about innovative programming at Marshall. Now, I really appreciate the dialogue and the communication that we have with Dr. Rodriguez. He's been great in that sense, and we will be talking with him moving forward, but we have some issues that we need to deal with now, and what we're doing with him has nothing to do with what's going on with Marshall right now. We don't have any programs other than what you're proposing to us with the early college, and as far as community engagement is concerned, I don't think you have a problem with anyone else but Marshall, because just listening to what has gone on from the last two weeks, you guys have listened to the public, you've listened to the communities, you've listened to everyone except for Marshall. So the proposal that you have to do innovative, creative things to appease the Ridge Point community as far as maybe virtual learning or different times that they will study, that was proposed last time, and they didn't want that. I remember you did that, and you said that was something that was going on all over the country, and we needed to grasp that. That was not something that they wanted, and so you listened to that. So this time, in order not to be shifted and rebalanced, you listened again, and that may be something that you put on the table again. So again, communication is going on, it's just not going on in the Marshall community. And so I want to let you know that we are listening, and we are awake, and we're not going anywhere. And I will say again, accountability goes both ways, Mr. Rosenthal. You said some things last week, and that's what we took away from it.
Ma'am, please don't mention board members' names.
So I will say accountability is, to address this mistake, we must use root cause analysis. I'll begin by saying, it's not my fault. And then I'll also say, his fault, her fault, their fault, not me. It is the only, it is not only what we do-
30 seconds.
-but also what we do not do for which we are accountable. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Brown. Please hold your applause.
Good evening to the board. I am here as Dolores Collins, private citizen, to speak on something near and dear to my heart. I watched the school board workshop last week and had to endure misinformation shared about Willeridge, which helps to perpetuate the myth of the terrible, terrible state of our school. This does a great disservice to our students, our staff, our graduates, and the community as a whole. When statements are made as though they are based on facts, people listen, and people believe it. Please don't do that. Case in point, Willeridge doesn't have a swimming team. We do. Another thing that I thought about is, we've had a famous Fort Bend graduate who was a swimmer, and she didn't depend on her school's swimming team for her swimming, but she went on to win gold in the Olympics. It can be done if you set your heart to it. Another myth, you cannot get an academic scholarship if you attend Willeridge. Millions of dollars have been given to Willeridge students in academic scholarships. I would ask that if a person has a question about these things, contact the principal before you make statements in public that people accept as fact. Mr. Hayden would be glad to clear up anything. My next point relates to the PTAC early college program. I noticed that board members have urged opening of high school number 12 two years early, and going all the way back to when Dr. Hooper was superintendent, things were promised to Willeridge then, such as an academy, which never happened, everybody else got one, we didn't. And I would like to see some level of commitment for Willeridge in this PTAC program. Don't put it off again for another year. We keep getting everything put off and then nothing happens. If you accelerate building a high school by two years, I think the same effort should be put into PTAC. I would love to see a true commitment come to fruition, not just more promises, and I'd like to see it in my lifetime. I'm not getting any younger, I'm 72. Please give me something to look forward to. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Please hold your applause. After that will be Rodrigo Carrion.
Hello, and I'm representing Marshall High School. We've had a lot of dialogue within the, since November, back and forth about our conversations. And we, at Marshall, we need Title I funding. I don't know what happened with our Title I. We should have it. Also, programs in our high school are needed. We're talking about delay, as you all are talking about delaying, putting everything on hold, nobody's going to want to come to Marshall. No one is going to want to come to Marshall. You have academies at Hightower, move some of them over to Marshall, then make our school attractive where other students will want to come there. We're going to be coming back to the same topic in another two years. Marshall is at 1,200 some odd students, and you have a difference of 800 to 1,000 students more at other campuses. We're not asking for anything that's impossible. Also, return us our zip codes. I live in 77489. Zip code right down the street in walking distance. Some kind of way, it disappeared overnight. It's now Zona Elkins. I don't know what happened. You all make decisions, you say we're going to table this. You don't need to table. You came together as a group, you need to just go ahead and make the decision, rezone, do what you need to do, balance out the schools. It should not be overcrowding in our schools like they are. We are making Marshall and Willeridge purposely, I'm not saying you guys, but the district purposely set up Marshall and Willeridge to fail. It should not be like this at all. This district is known across the country. Everyone wants, my husband and I moved here 27 years ago just because of Fort Bend ISD, and now we watched it diminish. But my children still go to Marshall, we're still making it, but I demand that you put programs in our school, and that you give us our Title I funding. You can take a program overnight and put it there, and it'd be set up there and ready to go come August. We don't have to wait two years for a program.
Thank you, ma'am. Up next is Rodrigo Carrion. Next will be Kyra Hardwick.
Good evening, board. Manager Rodrigo Carrion, I'd like to give an example how we, Dallas High School, former student from Dallas High School, were the only diverse school in the school district in the 80s, between three schools. And, and what, my reasons why in 1990 our schools and communities are still segregated. And issues, the election, hopefully you postpone or add this position five to the election before you approve it. That way, voters will have their chance for a First Amendment right, to choose their leader. And also relating, there's a, these early colleges, make sure that these credits are official, effective, in other school districts, make sure it's effective here, make sure our students get what they need. If not, they'll be valueless. And then the rezoning, my favorite one, was relating, what's this, position one, position one, but all of them weren't perfect, position one, the problems were with the elementaries, moving Sienna into Hightower, which you shouldn't, and then moving, with this Park Elementary into Willeridge, but we don't have no entry to Willeridge, and plus, we're almost finished with our tramphreshon road, where students will be able to walk, and the school district will be able to save money, the students will be able to walk into Hightower without busing them anymore, within one year. It should be done. And then also, rezoning Quay Valley and Lake Olympia into Marshall, where the buses will be making it easier to pick them up from there, once they get out of barn and bus them to Hightower, instead of going all the way car ride and coming all the way back to Elkins. So it'll be save time, save time and money for the school district, and, and plus, it'll keep the communities united, keep all these communities united, making highway six the divided line. Lake Olympia, Quay Valley, and all that, those were my communities, which I went to school with, in the 80s. So I wonder what's going on right now. The maximum upset, I went to Facebook, asked, what's wrong with sending them to Marshall? Anything? Oh, they're going to divide us, Quay Valley and Lake Olympia. No, they won't be divided, they'll keep you united. But going to another school, meeting new friends, meeting new people, and show the love for our community, not divided, we're supposed to be working together. The more friends we meet, the better. Now, so that's my key point of view. So it's very important to work together in every position, make it easier, and save money, and taxpayers. Taxpayers wondering, why are the taxes going up? Why, why? Well, we need more money to build more schools. But let's take advantage of our seats. Fill in our seats, like right here, start the board, so one seat, and then fill out our seats, Willeridge-
30 seconds.
-and then Marshall High School. That's the easy point. And then we'll think about the high school, see if we really need it seriously before, because here on the east side, the west, south side, is a wetlands. All those wetlands, well, I'd like to invite the people, January 31st, our new judge is open to the public, receive your order, your order, come to University of Houston and Shugland, so y'all can come and address any issues, any concerns relating Fort Bend County. But if y'all, people want to speak-
Time is up. Thank you, Mr. Carrion.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Up next, Kyra Hardwick. Thank you, ma'am. You'll have three minutes, and you'll have a 30-second warning before you're done.
Good evening. Just to add additional value to what's been stated already with regards to creating a comprehensive communication plan that will clearly identify and advise the community of the benefits of our early high school, excuse me, early college program at Marshall High School, I think that we've had an immense amount of information thrown at us as a community member, as a parent, as an advocate for the student experience. One of the things that's been combined is the conversation around zoning and then the programatics. The problem that we're experiencing is that it's difficult to dissect those and to allow those to stand independently. So what I am asking is that we not only identify the benefits, 60 credit hours in an associate's program, clear and concise pathways for our students to enter the college, the college process in a seamless manner, in a protected state. We give our kids an advantage that other districts already have. So what I'm asking is, as a parent, in the Marshall feeder pattern, as a parent of a student that is approaching ninth grade next year, give us an opportunity to make a concise decision around the programming and to also add value to it. And I'm also lending myself to be an advocate for that. If you need support from a parent perspective or an advocate for the student experience to be able to add value to the programming decisions that we're making across the district, we're far too diverse to have so much division within our, within our district. Fort Bend is exactly what it says it is, an innovative district. We need to really respond and operate that way.
Thank you, ma'am. Up next is Velma Pete. And then after Mrs. Pete will be Mr. John Fletcher.
Good evening. I would like to speak to the board in regards to ensuring the early college program has everything needed to be successful for many years to come in educating our Black and Brown and our first-generation college students at the Thurgood Marshall High School community. In the past, Fort Bend has eliminated programs by offering bare minimum resources. My son was a student in that IB program, and under the new leadership that landed at that school that day, she scrapped it in the middle of the year. I'm quite sure she didn't have that, all by herself to make that ruling, but it was scrapped. The dean of the program left at Christmas. All right, left the kids to fend for themselves. So from that experience, I know Fort Bend will start a program, and I give the resources to the programs, they will just die on the vine. The following are only a few requests that should be initiated to make the early college program improve the students' future careers. School leadership that respects the students, parents, and community members, leadership that will communicate in a timely manner, leadership that will stay at Thurgood Marshall longer than a year to grow future leaders. I spoke with a couple of employees with the Aleaf Early College High School and the HISD. They had great things to say about that early college high school program, but they do suggest a three-week summer bridge program to orientate the approved applicants to what will be expected in the first year of the program, and also the following four. More staff, trained staff to teach college classes to the students that they can get the credit, more college and career counselors to assist with all student and parent questions, more avid teachers, one for each grade level, a dean assigned to the early college program, no other duties, please. Give incentives to present staff to complete the requirements to advance their education so they can become adjunct teachers. It is good to keep the teachers there. They work good with that student population. What is the plan for year one, year five, and year 10? Will other innovative programs be added? I heard that little conversation. Communication, ooh-
30 seconds.
-parent group organize, webinar meetings, YouTube videos, and who are the business partners and what would be their roles. I challenge one of the trustees to step up and to end of your term to actually read a weekly report and visit the campus bi-monthly to see with your own eyes the progress that will be made. Don't depend totally on our assistant superintendents, Dr. Patabill and Dr. Rodriguez, for updates, or you will be here this time next year saying, oh, wow, the education gap is still winding. Won't you say enough is enough? No longer watch, will there continue to be a gap caused by lack of resources?
Thank you very much. Next is John Fletcher. Mr. Fletcher here. All right. Next, Adil Ektar. Thank you, sir. You'll have three minutes, and Mr. Rosenthal will give you a 30-second warning.
All right. Dear esteemed board members, Superintendent Dupree, thank y'all so much for giving me this opportunity to address you here, but I am addressing six board members here tonight and not seven, as is expected. So that's what I want to talk about tonight. I want to talk about Board trustee position number five, which was vacated by KP George. So just to lay it out a little bit for everybody here tonight, everybody's going to watch on video. November 7th, KP George wins election for county judge and informs the board and the administration of his intention to resign from his spot on the Board of Trustees. It would be effective December 31st. Soon thereafter, questions started about the upcoming vacancy, how it's going to be handled. Couple of meetings have happened since, and nobody's talked about it that I'm aware of. And with all the communication mediums, with email, Twitter, and everything else, from my understanding, it has not been communicated to the public what to expect. So for the past 22 days now, position number five of the Board of Trustees remains vacant, but with no word from anyone on how it's going to be filled. 83, maybe 84 days after KP actually informed y'all of his intention to resign, there is no word that we know from anyone. So how is this right? Now, one, perhaps relatively easy solution, would be to do what the board decided to do back in 2012. Back in 2012, we had a similar situation, and a board member resigned, I believe- Back in 2012, we had a similar situation and a board member resigned, I believe due to illness and that spot was filled, it was assigned and then an election was held, which was won actually by Mr. Rosenthal. So, there's plenty of precedent from my understanding, I think we just wanna know what, what it is that we're waiting for. Now, I suppose that there are probably different, you know, legal alternatives that task fee will allow for, you know, different ways to fill this particular position, but at the same time, I think that we would all agree that sometimes the legally sound thing to do is not always the morally right thing to do and that's, you know, what I would hope, that we would do the morally right thing for all the taxpayers and the entire community when it comes to the spot. So, just two things that I, I would like to see, for one, I would ask you all, please make it clear and transparent your intentions regarding the vacancy. Do so by the end of this month. It's already been almost three months. I think we could do that by the end of this month. And number two, please, put the seat up for an election this May. As per task fee in the constitution, the position cannot continue to stay unrepresented as the taxpayers need to see their money represented and we're-
Thank you sir.
-we vote for this position. So, thank you so much, that's what our community expects and we hope to see this soon.
Thank you sir. Up next is Tina Mitchie and then after her will be Darren Harrington.
Hi guys, how you doing? My name is Tina Mitchie, I personally graduated from Fort Bend ISD in 2003 from Hightower High School. I'm gonna talk about what the constituent before me talked about, about position five. I personally believe it should be on the May ballot. According to the rules, you have three options, so appoint someone to have a special election or to wait till a general election. My question is, why didn't the board put on the general election since it's coming up in May? From someone who graduated from Fort Bend ISD, I understand that all seven of you are a team and with one missing spot, I feel that's unfair to the current children of this district. These children, I was one of them once. So, my question is to you is, why haven't we heard anything about this spot in the last month? And as the person before me said, KP won in November, he currently resigned, I understand that, the last person who resigned resigned in July. This is not July, this is, we're coming up to a main election. So, I appreciate your time. My name is Tina, have a nice evening.
Thank you Tina. Mr. Darren Harrington. Mr. Harrington, you'll have three minutes and Ms. Rosenthal will give you a 30 second warning.
I'm here also to inquire why this position is not on the ballot. And the issue kinda transcends a lot of things. Behind you is an American flag, behind you is a Texas flag and one of the cornerstone principles of democracy is that we show up at the ballot box and we put people in. Now, I've read that statute and the intent behind that statute is to appoint and get them on the ballot as soon as possible. There's some concerns that we're somehow running out the shot clock, that somehow we wanna control who we put on the board, that we don't want someone to go through the pain of running, only to potentially run again. Those concepts are devoid of the concept of the people and democracy. We had some, we all know Mr. George and this isn't about Darren coming in and saying, Darren's right or Mr. George's right, this is about our American concept of democracy. And so, we saw some weird results. I didn't think KP George is gonna win county judge, he did. I didn't think Donald Trump was gonna win president, he did. It's messy business folks and all of you, the other aspect that concerns me is there's been no mention in the record of what you're planning to do with this. So, is there already an agreement? Is there a walking quorum on what you're planning to do? So, I suggest you guys go back in executive session and get with Rick and fix it because the concept you're missing is the concept of democracy and servant leadership, models that we're gonna take it to the people, we're gonna let them decide. You ask this, the people for a billion dollars? We were good enough for that, but we, we don't even have a board member. Now, I'll question the judgment of you guys flying solo with one wing out when you're taking pot shots from everybody in the whole community on rezoning. Me personally, if I'm up there with you guys, I want everybody up there with me. But we have people that are more than able to serve, even if they were serving on a short period, but let's get this right, let's get the messaging that you're sending-
Thirty seconds.
-right with the words. And that's some of the disconnect that's going on here. We've gotta follow up with actions to gird up our principles. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harrington. Up next is, is John Fletcher here? Did we find him by chance? All right. Mr. Jerry Monroe.
You know, I went to one of them poor high schools where you wasn't supposed to learn nothing and let me give you a quick history lesson why. Things don't tend to work right for African Americans in Fort Bend ISD. One, you don't have a black agenda. You don't know what you want, you don't know how to get it. You leave that left up to people who have oppressed you for over 400 years. So, here's your history lesson. Why we keep talking about Brown versus the Board of Education? What is it that those people did after Brown that you support right now? It's called school choice. You bamboozled my people with school choice and magnet programs. They sucked you in, made you think this is where your child is supposed to go. Now, when you did that, you took your child out of a high performing African American school. You sent him over there to the white dream. He didn't get the scholarships that they were promised. His GPA wasn't right and now you gotta figure out what to do with the black school. You can't figure that out because your intentions were never right. They were never right. As a Moroccan or a black man, yesterday was a real important day. We live in Dr. King's dream, right? We're giving kids an unequal education in 2019. We're segregating high schools in 2019. You separated your communities where it's black and it's white in 2019, but you have the audacity to speak of a man who died on a concrete slab at the Lorraine Motel and you sit here and you play with these people. You don't want me here and I don't wanna be here. But for six years, I kept telling y'all, if you can ever prove me to be a lie, then I would leave. You can't prove me to be a lie. Let me tell you, you got a walking quorum. The reason your schools are failing, I did an open records request. Can you tell these people why you got all these uncertified substitute teachers in all your schools? That's how a school fails. How do you close them? You flip principals every two or three years. You remove programs-
Thirty seconds.
-you don't give them the funding that they deserve. I'm not leaving. I'm gonna cause problem after problem by just telling the truth. And come Thursday, I'm gonna tell the truth about that Title I that you been getting, that you ain't gave to them schools. You are in violation of federal law and now you on my clock.
Thank you, Mr. Monroe. Did we have Mr. Fletcher? All right. We will now convene in closed session. What was your name, sir? Go for it. You'll have, you'll have three minutes, sir, and Ms. Rosenthal will give you a 30 second warning.
No problem, no problem. I was surprised not really that Mr. Monroe showed up for this and I'm very surprised that I'm following him. But let me just get to the point, the main point here and you guys knew me a little better, hopefully you'll understand the-